All right, I will call to order the Borough Council meeting for Wednesday, January 16th at 7:30, 4:00 PM. Mr. Metcalf, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Weisbuer, here. Ms. Ricker, it's Pananopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Nixon.
Here.
Mr. McGreevy.
Here.
It's Tevlin Moffitt.
President.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
Solicitor Walco.
Here.
President Muter.
Here. Mr. Walco, could you give us a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have no comments. Mayor, do you have a report?
I do, I have the incidents, the monthly incident report, as given to me by Chief Gallagher, which I am submitting for the record. I would like to give a, according to the report, it was fairly consistent with the month before, with minor uptake in some thefts from autos, people are reminded to please lock their car doors, it just don't become an easy target, and just, it's an easy thing to do to stop, stop us from being attractive. I would like to thank Chief Gallagher, Chief Gallagher actually got the borough a $22,000 grant for a new piece of equipment for our police force, a license plate reader, which allows the force to quickly and accurately read license plates to determine if there are stolen vehicles in our midst. It's a very useful piece of equipment, and it's free to the borough, thanks to Chief Gallagher's hard work in getting us a grant, and I appreciate his hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we may be having a little bit of snow this weekend, the forecast is a little monkey. I just want to remind folks that an hour after it starts to snow, if you are in a snow zone, please move your car so you don't get a ticket, and so that the plows can get through and clear the roads for everybody, everybody's benefit. And also, there is an ordinance in the borough that you must clear your sidewalk within 24 hours of snow stopping, and we're going to start really enforcing that this year, and I'm going to ask people to really, please make an effort to clear your sidewalks, so that everybody can have access to clean, safe sidewalks, particularly in very busy zones of Montgomery Avenue, please make sure you get your sidewalks cleared. If you have difficulty clearing your sidewalks, let me know, give me a shout, shoot me an email, and we'll see if there's some young hands in the borough who are able to help out with this, with this job, and see if there's some neighbors who are willing to help neighbors clear their sidewalks, and make it just a safe passage for everybody to safety. So, that is it for my report.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll take a motion to amend the agenda to add a seven, or eight, eight prime, that is the first, before we begin the action items, to have an executive session, so that we can discuss information we received from the solicitor, before we move through some of our decision making.
I make motions to have an executive session.
Eight, eight prime.
All seconded, third.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the agenda is amended. I'll hand off to Solicitor Walco, to bring us into a public hearing.
Sure, we're going to adjourn the public meeting at this time, and we will first adjourn into a public hearing on ordinance 1012, which is an ordinance to essentially amend, but create a property maintenance code in the borough of Norbert by three exhibits I will be marking. The first is exhibit one, the ordinance itself. Exhibit two is the legal notice of tonight's hearings and the proof of publication of that legal notice, which is in the City Suburban Newspaper, which was published on January 2nd, 2019. Borough exhibit three is a copy of the attested ordinance that was submitted to the law library, and is marked received by the law library on January 2nd, 2019. This is an ordinance that creates a property maintenance code for the borough, it's not exactly the same as the international property maintenance code that a lot of municipalities use, as it was created with much care by our borough manager, recognizing the uniqueness to Norbert and the things that we'd like to have to keep here, the uniqueness, but still addressing some of the more common maintenance problems that really are a drain on the community. So it is somewhat an adoption of the Uniform Property Maintenance Code, but it's not a complete adoption. So that, with that, I'd see if the manager would have any other comments regarding this ordinance.
I do not, it's inaccurate description of what it is.
Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak regarding this ordinance? Hearing seeing none, I'll turn it over to council, if any council have any questions or comments regarding this ordinance? Hearing seeing none, as this ordinance was?
Never mind, thank you.
Again, as this ordinance was properly advertised for the hearing tonight, we will now adjourn that public hearing. We will adjourn into a second public hearing on ordinance 1013, which is a public hearing regarding an ordinance to amend the Norbert Code, or the Building Construction Code, and the Fire Prevention Code, to create a total overhaul of both of those codes that would incorporate the 2015 UCC, or Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code standards, that are adopted by Commonwealth, Pennsylvania. There are three exhibits, one, exhibit one, the ordinance itself, exhibit two, the legal notice of tonight's hearing and proof of publication in the City Suburban News, published on January 2nd, 2019, and the third is the submission of this ordinance and proof thereof to the Montgomery County Law Library on January 2nd, 2019. This ordinance, as with the other one, has been also available for inspection at the borough. Norbert does have the Uniform Construction Code adopted currently, I believe it's 2009, possibly, version. All municipalities throughout Commonwealth are now adopting the 2015, so we would be in line with them, bringing the building codes up to the standards that are uniform throughout Commonwealth, by also retaining all of the more stringent standards that we've had in place that we prefer to keep, and also it amends the Fire Prevention Code to incorporate the aspects of the international fire codes, so again, having uniform fire prevention standards as well, which are the same throughout the Commonwealth. Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding this ordinance? Does council have any questions or comments? Just one thing to mention, that there will be some additional business that we will need to do as council, is that I believe both these ordinances will require appeals boards to be created. Right now, we share a UCC appeals board with Lower Marion Township, however, how that happened, and how it should operate is somewhat of a mystery, so it may be within, it may be within the borough's interest to create a unique, their own appeals boards, and it would be something that would be looking to the general public to try to find expertise in certain areas, in these subjects, to serve on those appeals boards. So that is something that would need to be done, that would be done by resolution. But in the meantime, we do have an agreement with Lower Marion for the UCC appeals boards. Any questions or comments?
Can you provide us with the qualifications for the Uniform Construction Code appeal board?
Yeah, it varies, but essentially, it'd be great if you had engineering, architectural, building construction, I mean even if you're a contractor and can understand like how to build a residence or a structure, that you'd be able to look at the code, to see if something is built to code, that would be helpful to have. So it could be a blue collar construction work to a white collar architect work, that is essentially who should be on these boards, some level of expertise.
Thank you.
All right, so hearing seeing no other comments, we will close this public hearing, and we will adjourn back into the public meeting. Both these ordinances are now in a position to be voted upon by this council.
All right, thank you, we will move to public comment. Public comment, this will be the only opportunity remaining this evening for a member of the public to make a comment on any subject or any topic, I see Mr. Mooseburner, I'll let you start.
Thank you, Aaron. George Mooseburner, 114 Conway Avenue. A quick question, what's the status of the tennis courts? Last I heard was a month or two ago, when I think our public director, public director of Public Works was listing bids to fix those, I took that as a really good sign, so I'm hoping that tennis comes back to Norbert in 2019.
Mr. Metcalf, is that something we can answer succinctly at this time, or?
No, the rec board was working with our consultant on a plan for Norbert and Sabine Park, so I'd like to, not being fully fluent in what they decided on, I'd like to pause for a second, because I'd like those planned documents to be resented to council, adopted, and then we can start implementing those recommendations.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Mooseburner, I will try and get back to you with some more details following the meeting.
Okay, just a few guys' comments, because I know some council members are fairly new, that a dollar has not been spent on those tennis courts in at least 15 years, maybe 20 years. Tennis courts, like everything else, need to get maintained, and they have not been maintained, and so a year ago, I was very, I was very hopeful, as a matter of fact, I was told it was a done deal, we're going to get the courts done, the money was there, didn't get done. As recently as April or May, I was told, well, as soon as the weather clears, we're going to get it done, didn't get done, and I think it's way overdue, and I realize there's a lot of other priorities, but this is something I think where it's way overdue, and the residents, the children, visitors to Norbert would much appreciate.
Thank you. Anyone else have public comment this evening? Yes, Mrs. Bezak.
Hi, excuse me, I'm on the end of a cold. My name's Kimberly Bezak, 237 Dudley Avenue, I, just a few things before I make some comments about the bike infrastructure on the agenda tonight. I had the opportunity to sit on the Bike Montgomery County Steering Committee, which worked on the Bike Monaco Plan, representing Norbert and Norbert Cycling Club, and currently I also sit on the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission's Public Participation Task Force, representing Montgomery County, looking at multimodal transportation interests for the residents of Montgomery County. And I've also founded and co-run Norbert Cycling Club with Jean Borack, who's right here. You know, in Norbert, when I first moved here, there really wasn't any bike culture. I moved here with my cargo bike that I used for transportation, and people thought I was that wacky woman on the blue bike that had her kids in a bucket, and one day someone asked me to start a cycling club, and I thought, okay, sure, why not, 20 people will join, and now we have about 400 people in Norbert that are in this club, that doesn't count kids and significant others. So really, in a matter of two years, Norbert has become a bike town, and we are getting a lot of recognition regionally for what is happening here, because we don't have a single bit of paint, or signage, or meaningful facilities in Norbert, yet a lot of people are coming around to ditching a car and using a bike to get around for transportation. So if there are any questions tonight at the table that I can be of help with regarding, you know, visuals, what a fix-it might look like, what a bike rack might look like, I'm happy to provide any answers to those questions, and I just thank you for taking the time to consider, literally, a stake in the ground, to, for the borough, to signal to current residents, and people that are interested in our community, that yes, we support biking for transportation, it's a worthwhile way to get around, and to kind of live light, car light, in the suburbs, so thank you very much.
Anyone else have public comment?
Hi, Mona Elshacks, so I am definitely in support of the biking, and I'm, thank you to the council for bringing this up tonight. I think it could possibly reduce car traffic, which a lot of residents are concerned about, reduce parking problems, which a lot of residents are concerned about, maybe bring in new bicyclists to Norbert who will frequent our local businesses, and that could be great for our businesses, and it clearly, there's a really engaged group of citizens that are interested in it, so I really support that, and I like the tennis idea too, George, so I commend the council for having a balanced budget this year, thank you for doing that, so, you know, maybe we have a little extra money to spend on these things, but I think the other thing that's great about the biking, as it sounds to me, from what I've heard from other meetings, that a lot of this cost could be covered by grants, so just putting in a couple bike racks and bike fixing stations, so thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Ridgeway.
Ed Ridgeway, 155 Marion, just want to give you an update on some events, we, the library has an event next Saturday, it's their only fundraiser of the year, it's their Quizzo night, anybody that's ever done it, it's a, it's a pretty fun night, you get a team together, and it's right here across the hall, and you just join up, everybody pays 20 bucks, and all proceeds go to the library. Most of the annual events are on the calendar, the 4th of July committee's events are on the calendar, the Business Association events, the Civic Association events, are all happening as usual, except for the music festivals, there's currently no music festivals on the calendar.
Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jean Borack, I live at 510 North Essex Avenue, I'm vice president of the Norbert Cycling Club, and also, I've been a resident of Norbert for about 11 years, so I just wanted to add to what Kimberly was saying in support of the biking infrastructure in Norbert. I just wanted to give a few supporting evidence for, in terms of the benefits that go beyond, I think a lot of people think that in terms of, like, for biking infrastructure, it just benefits the bicyclists in the community, but it goes way beyond that, and I just wanted to share a few facts. So, it spans from safety for the whole community, to economic benefits, and also livability benefits for the community. So the first is safety, studies have shown that cities with a higher bicycling rate, they have lower crash rates for all road users, so not just for bicyclists, but for drivers and bikers alike. So, in support of that, Barbara McCann, who's the safety director of the US Department of Transportation, she says, one of the things we found with bike infrastructure is that it makes streets safer for everyone, not just bicyclists, it reduces the frequency of crashes, it calms traffic, which makes streets less chaotic and safer for everyone. And also, Dan Burden, who's a livability expert, he's helped like over 3,500 towns across North America, he says, the reason for bikeways is not what they do for bicyclists, but what they do for the whole community. They're great for drivers, because they make it safer to get in and out of parked cars, they're great for walkers, because it creates more distance between the sidewalk and speeding vehicles. So, so this is talking about like bike lanes on the road. Also creates a buffer for pedestrians between the sidewalks and the oncoming traffic, which makes it safer for younger children who's playing on the sidewalk or walking, has a traffic calming effect. And the other thing is the economic benefit, it helps businesses attract younger employees, who, a lot of recent studies have shown that younger people are driving less, they're biking more, so that's a very big draw for businesses to attract those younger employees. Also, the bike facilities in front of retail businesses, it helps increase traffic to those businesses, increases visibility, so it helps them in general, and it reduces congestion, I know that's a big concern in the area of increased congestion with the density, but they actually say, there's a 3, there was a 3% drop in traffic from 2007 to 2008, and, but that little drop in traffic has translated to a 30% reduction in peak hour congestion. So it just takes a little bit of nudging, in terms of getting less cars on the road, and then...
You have one final point, go ahead.
Okay.
Just for a time.
And livability, it would just help the environment and improve the health-related costs for the community. So, I think, just in conclusion, there's a great impact for a very small investment for the community, and I'm speaking not just in terms of bicyclists, but as a resident in Norbert who's invested in the community, I want to see a vibrant town, where people, you see more people in the streets rather than cars, and I hope that council will value biking infrastructure in Norbert.
Thank you.
Fred Bush, excuse me, I have a call to you, 105 Fox Hall Lane, I just want to commend council for once again taking up this bicycling grant application that had been, you know, started up and expanding it, and developing it into something greater, and I think it's important to think about this, not just as a one-off grant application, but I would encourage council to think more about how it can bring bicycling enhancements into the process, you know, from year to year, or, and some of the other regulations as well. This is not just one grant, but as you can see, there is great support in the community for bicycling enhancement, so it should be something to be considered, not just in this one meeting, but in the future.
Jim Snrenick, 130 Woodside Avenue, just want to, I'm also here in support of the bicycle infrastructure, I think it's awesome. I'm one of the people that's mostly ditched my car, I ride to work five days a week, except when I have to go to meetings, to Broad Street, where my office building is located, and when I get, I just wanted to say that when I get into the, when I cross City Avenue into Philly, it's kind of a relief, because then I know I'm in a dedicated bike lane, and I feel like cars are more aware of me, and more accepting, so it's nice to have that infrastructure when you have it, and it's kind of a big encouragement to keep going. Also, just to add on to one of the points that Gina made, I'm a licensed architect, and in the building I'm working at, the president of the building management company just came to me the other day, and he's asking me to come up with a design for a new bike room on the first floor of a building, and he said he wants about, says a couple offices are asking for this facility now, that bike storage, because that's, he's hearing a lot of it, and two companies that are about to sign leases specifically just asked for it. So I asked him, what are we talking about, like 10 bike spaces, he's like, no, 50, because he's expecting not just these two companies that signed a lease, but future leases, so I just wanted to, you know, say that.
Okay, any other public comment? All right, thank you all, we will have closed public comment, and we will recess into executive session, so I'm going to ask if we can clear the room for a few minutes, you guys can hang out in the hallway, hopefully. All right, we are going to rejoin into public session after discussing a quasi judicial matter and deliberation in executive session. I will take a motion for eight, eight.
Yeah, President Muter, I move that Borough Council approve the minutes of the December 5, 2018, it's amended from 19, it was a typo, workshop meeting, and the December 19, 2018 business meetings of Borough Council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to Council Nixon.
Thank you. President Muter, I move that Borough Council approve the schedule of bills to pay all the general sewer and solid waste funds, and authorize the Borough Manager to pay all bills otherwise forthwith.
Second.
Second, thank you, any discussion on the schedule? All in favor of paying the schedule of bills?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Eight, C.
Eight, C, council members, I ask that we adopt ordinance, sorry, 1012, property maintenance and ordinance, and ordinance amending the Norbert Borough Code, creating Chapter 394, property maintenance provides for definition standards and enforcement of maintenance of property and structures throughout the borough.
I second that. Seconded, any discussion? We've discussed this before, and hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Ordinance 1012, we'll go to the mayor's desk, and congratulations on all that hard work.
Yeah, good job, G.G.
And I would like to add, the winter weather seems to have waited until you've gotten this adopted, too.
Yes. There's a price in every package.
That's right. Eight, D, that's back to you.
Council members, I move that we adopt ordinance 1013, ordinance amending Chapter 50, goodbye, 50, building construction to remain, to rename Chapter Construction Code Uniform, to adopt the 2015 International Codes issued by the International Code Council, and the provisions amended by the UCC Review and Advisory Council, to repeal all prior inconsistent provisions, five years, within Chapter 50, to provide for the Administration Enforcement Appeal, Appeals Board, and fees for the code, and repeal of Chapter 67 Fire Prevention.
I second that.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion?
It took a very long time, when I first, thank you, when I first came here, this is my only note, Mr. Weisbuer was working all of that, and it's taken all this time to sort of come back to the original idea where, simple is best.
Simple is best.
Simple is best.
Yep.
That was, that's where we started, that's where we're ending.
And by simple, we mean a code book that's about this stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved unanimously. Let's move, let's jump around a little here, let's go to a, actually, let's go to J.
Sure, let me skip to the end, if I could.
So, we give Mr. Walco a chance to...
Yeah, no, no, it's, I think J is pretty gosh darn straightforward. President Muter, I move that Borough Council approve the allocation of capital funds for the purchase of the following, a John Deere Z960M Z-Track, in the amount of $9,164.25, Ohio Steel 48-inch cord plug aerator, in the amount of $417.08, and North Star tow behind trailer boom broadcast and spot sprayer, in the amount of $279.99. The total allocation of funds coming to $9,861.32.
Second.
Okay, seconded, any discussion?
This came up in FNA, and this is equipment that Public Works is requesting to perform maintenance specifically with respect to Sabine, and our park, Sabine Park, and our park here in town, and the baseball field, it's approximately $10,000 of investment, and Public Works feels that this, Ed told us he thinks that this piece of equipment should have a lifespan of eight years, over those eight years, each year, we should save approximately $5,000 in what we're spending on outside services, for the work that our Public Works crew can use this equipment to accomplish more often, and perhaps better, so we'll save $40,000 over eight years for better work, by spending 10 now, I think it's a great move, and I commend the office and the Public Works team for bringing this to us, we're just proud of our professionalism.
Any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Let's move past Action Items Eight into Nine, Nine A. Mr. Manager, do you have a report?
Yeah, I gave a more, I gave a long version of my Borough Manager's report at the FNA meeting, I'll summarize quickly in a couple minutes what we discussed. End of year financials for the borough are published in the meeting package, are a... Our adjusted net income for the general fund in 2018 was $121,000, or roughly 3% of general fund expenditures. So the general fund finished in the black.
Very good.
Yeah. The solid waste fund as well reports a net income of $63,000, a little bit north of that. Sewer fund net income of $55,786, and the cash fund balances for those three funds ended the year at $396,204,000 and $239,000 respectively. The numbers aren't so much important as the qualitative aspect of what that means. The sewer and solid funds are in a good position to deal with any unforeseen costs, damage, storms that could come up, new regulations that the state or Fed could impose upon the borough, many, any sorts of rainy day items that could come up, anything having to do with disposing of trash downtown, waste facilities, and disposing of everyone's sewage. Our general fund, however, is not as well-funded. It remains chronically underfunded, and it's our most pressing financial need and currently my biggest worry, because we just ran a $95,000 payroll, and the book balance in the general fund is $210,000. That means we have $210,000 on the books to make it to when tax revenue starts coming in. And that usually starts coming in in the second, third weeks of February. Tax bills are going to be issued shortly. If I have to make any transfers of funds from any other funds to the general fund to maintain cash flow, I'll make council aware of that, but I'm presently hoping I won't have to do that. Generally speaking, you want to finish the year with about 16% of your annual expenditures in general fund reserves, which is $683,000, both in cash and any receivables that you're expecting at the end of the year, less any accrued liabilities. We're not there yet. It's going to take a while to dig out of that hole. It's not going to take forever. I think if we keep having years where we have net income and things are going well, we're managing costs, we're still doing what we want to do, delivering the services the community expects, we can build more and more cushion in our general fund. And if we get, and we'll also be keeping an eye on our tax base and doing, and making sure that our tax base remains healthy and private investment in the community keeps moving forward. There are other minor things in the report that I won't highlight in my verbal report. Everyone, you can read it. We are starting to note benefits for full-time employees, which will be no cost to the borough, a 457B deferred compensation retirement plan that employees can contribute income to tax-deferred, and the interest accrues tax-deferred, and you pay interest when you withdraw and you retire. We're also starting flexible spending accounts for dependent care expenses for all borough full-time employees. You can likewise put aside money tax-free to pay for childcare services. And speaking of childcare services, we did meet the newest addition to the Carroll family, Ken. So he's four weeks old. He looks great and healthy. He weighs about seven pounds. I'd forgotten how small we all start out like this until I met, but Mom and David are doing well.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Let's go, the monthly reports have been filed. Let's go to new business. I'm going to inject two things in new business before we talk about biking. First is we need to appoint a UCC Appeals Board. And so I guess a call needs to go out to the community for individuals, as Mr. Walco indicated, with engineering, architecture, building construction experience. And maybe when Mr. Walco gets back, he can just quickly advise, I think it's a three-member board.
Three-member board.
Okay. So there's three open positions, and we are looking to fill that as soon as possible. Unless we have that board filled, appeals would be deemed, they would win.
Well, I think we have a shared.
They outsourced them.
We outsourced them.
We still outsource them, right? But they don't often meet, and then you miss your time period.
There are bumps there.
Yeah, so, but the goal is to overcome that. Okay.
This is timely for your announcement. While the office is advertising for that, could I just suggest, and we'll see what council president wants to do, but that perhaps we should incorporate an advertisement for library board and civil service commission alternates? I think we collectively may have dropped the ball on advertising that. I just, I think, I'd like to do that.
Did we receive any new applications?
We did not, and I, Jim, I had the same concern coming into tonight's meeting, whether we had tied up that loose end, so.
I think it was a group. We got, we had a crazy few weeks. That's no one person's fault. If it is, it's mine. But I just think if we're going to advertise, maybe we should throw those two out there.
Okay. Okay, great.
Good point.
The second relates to the music festivals, and I would like to ask Mr. Ridgeway if he could stand up for a moment and sort of explain to us the history, where we were and where we are, and maybe where we might want to go.
The music festivals started maybe 15, 18 years ago, and almost all of them have been run by McChay's and the Greeks, and run by a former employee of McChay's who's no longer going to be running them. So she handled all aspects of this and was booking the bands and all of the, all the festival details. Now, of course, the borough is, you know, an important element to any festival that goes on here because the, you know, the borough provides the support, and the borough provides the venue, which is like the most important thing for any event. So, you know, as a council and as a borough, we have to decide, you know, do we want, what do we want to do about this going forward? Right now, there is no music festival on the books. We have to decide, do we want there to be one? What's the best way to go about it? There are some business owners, and there are some public citizens who are interested in talking about this and having this conversation on what to do, but I want the borough to be involved too, because, you know, we can't do it without the borough. The borough says whether the street is open or closed. The borough has to collect the trash and provide, you know, some of the essential support pieces for this. And so it's time to have that conversation. What are we going to do about music and art festivals and decide, like, as a town, you know, what do we think of them? Do we want them to continue, and how do we go about it?
So it sounds like this is a bigger conversation, really, you know, who's going to pick up? Who's going to pick that up? Who's going to do the organizing? And then probably tie up details in terms of, from the council perspective, you know, street permits, liability insurance, et cetera. But that would involve things like the civic association, other community groups, someone else in the NDA who wanted to pick this. I mean, right now, it's an open question.
Yes.
So let me ask you, what would be the timeline necessary to figure out that leadership structure so that those festivals could continue on the schedule that they have currently been?
Well, I guess the sooner the better, obviously. The, you know, there's a few different things that have to happen to have the music festival. You have to book bands for it, and you have to book the sound for it. One of the individuals who has been involved so far, who has done the sound, will be, you know, has asked if we want him to do the sound again, and he has other commitments and other festivals. So if, for instance, that person, we wanted to get that sound guy involved again, you know, then he needs an answer from us as to whether we want him. He's not the only sound person around. Maybe we want to do it a different way. And, but the sooner we get it locked down, what are we going to do, then we can start figuring out the pieces, which are, you know, sound, maybe artists and vendors, if we continue that part of it, the art part of it. You know, that's, that's something where these people do all sorts of different festivals, and they need to know if the festival is happening so that they can schedule to be in Narberth for that day. So, you know, it doesn't have to be done today, but the sooner we do it, the easier it will be to make it happen.
Okay. I'm going to open this up for brief comments by council members, so you get an idea of where everybody's head is on this, and then we'll probably delegate this to a subcommittee. Okay. Go ahead.
Ed, you said there were previously three music festivals or two? What did you say? I'm sorry.
There have been three music festivals for, I would say, at least 15 years.
Fall, spring, summer, right?
Excuse me?
Fall, spring, and summer?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I think this is a, really a larger conversation of how does the borough support events in our community? Is it through the business association? Is this through the Fourth of July Committee? Is it through association? And I do think, particularly now that we don't have economic development, while I don't want to throw an ad hoc committee, I do think this really does warrant looking at how does council intentionally support the Narberth Business Association? What kind of is that memorandum of understanding that, how we do support them and what their expectations are of both the NDA and the Fourth of July Committee? And while, you know, I'm not suggesting that we forget the music festival that everybody looks forward to in the spring, I did have concerns about the music festival and how we, the borough gave a tremendous amount of in-kind donations with police and Public Works and overtime, and I had some questions about, about how that was organized. I do think it would behoove us to kind of tighten up how we do support all events in our borough strategically and sustainably.
Anyone else? Comments?
My thoughts, I mean, I think to follow along with what Cindy brought up, we really need to figure out what role is this borough government going to play at events? And if it's, if it's a support role, that's one thing, but if we're actually going to be getting involved, I think we need to own it and do it ourselves. I don't think we could do it, either we should fund another organization, like, i.e., example, the Fourth of July Committee, or we need to do it. But I think that we have to come up with a policy about what is the borough government's role, and what are we going to do to support outside organizations, if anything? And maybe this is just a kick to get us there, and that'll help us answer its question, but I think that it's been very ad hoc. It's been just a, they, our current policy until this moment has just been, it's different every year, and it evolves organically, and perhaps we need to get out in front of it.
I would say this is a conversation that started in economic development with Ed, and I would agree that we need to have more of a conversation. It's more complicated than it sounds.
I think so.
You know, because it is this relationship between the NDA and the government. So, yeah, I guess now economic development is kind of subsumed under finance and administration, so maybe that committee could take this up, or maybe we should take it up in the next committee meeting.
What I'm going to suggest, actually, Ed and I were not able to link up over the past two weeks because I've been out of touch. I will follow up with Ed after this meeting, coordinate with, you know, Sean and the office a little bit on some of the touchpoints, and then I will be in touch with committee chairs to discuss how and if it connects to your committee and what tasks might be required.
Sure. If I may.
Yes, please.
If I may. As both a business owner and a member of government, I would say that I would, these festivals are of a benefit to our borough. I think they showcase our borough, they really present our borough in a great light, which I think in many tangible and intangible ways benefits us all. As the mayor and the head of police, I would be willing to work with whoever's putting it together to create a plan and make sure everybody is safe at these festivals, continue to make sure everybody. So I'd be willing to help and pitch in from my end, so for what that's worth.
All right. So we'll move the ball to the next, to the next step, and I just wanted everyone to be aware of this, and the public to be aware. This is a good forum for that. Let's talk about, let's stay on new business, and let's talk about biking infrastructure. Who would like to stick that one up?
Does it go to Sean?
Go ahead, Sean.
Councilman Mayor, I prepared a short memo for you all highlighting conversations, work that began maybe a year ago, in an effort to procure and install bike facilities. That can mean anything from bike racks, fix-it stations, signs, information, and dedicated bike lanes and so forth. And I had an opportunity to discuss the project in more detail with Cindy Rickards, with Kim Bezak, with Gene about the project details, and I came to, I've come to a fairly good understanding of where things stand at the moment, and what I'm asking council to consider, and maybe not from a vote, but from a nod of heads perhaps, to tell me whether or not this is something that council would like staff to dedicate more time to. We've gotten to a point where we've reached a threshold in investigating this plan, this project, this process. To take it, to take it further would commit a fairly significant amount of resources in a short amount of time to meet a grant deadline and to get this thing off the ground. The scope of the project is to purchase and install some bike parking facilities in our downtown business district, including a whole parking meter, pole-mounted parking facilities, and additional bike racks around Borough Hall, Narberth Park, and the library, a fix-it station at Station Circle for minor repairs, some directional signage on Windsor Avenue and up to highlight regional bike-through routes, an informational kiosk at Station Circle to describe the same, and money for design and engineering of bike facilities that could be woven into our Windsor Avenue project, which is starting with a public meeting in February, and our traffic engineer has already been working on that and construction costs. Altogether, it's a, it's, I think, a reasonable lift for the borough to accomplish. I don't, I'm not worried by the scope and complexity of the project. I estimate the budget to be anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000. That includes costs of installation, costs of construction, design, and engineering. Only about 20% of that is eligible for grant funding, direct grant funding through this MOCO 2040 grant, however, and the borough would be on the hook to match 20% of the total project cost through in-kind contributions.
Sorry, could you say those percentages again?
Yeah.
You said, budget estimate $20,000 to $30,000. Estimate for grant would be $20,000, and we would have to support with 20% of the project cost. That's what I see.
Yes, and that's correct. The total project cost would involve design and engineering services, and that is not, that's not something that's reimbursable in the 2040 grant program. So the project might have a cost of, let's say, $30,000, but the county really only wants to fund stuff, physical things. And that might be $20,000 or $25,000 of the project. So we'd be able to come out, we'd be able only to get that much of the project funded.
And where would the, where would the dollars for that borough match come from in your expectation of understanding the budget and the capital?
Well, I think that's, that's part of the reason we're having this conversation, is I want to be able to answer that question more thoughtfully and accurately in the context of this grant application, so I could then prepare a detailed budget and answer that question directly. We are investing, we had already planned on investing money in design and engineering costs for the Windsor Avenue project, so we maybe allocate some of that expenditure we had already been planning on spending towards designing and engineering bike facilities. Some of the tentative cross-sections I've looked at for Windsor Avenue include bike facilities. That was one of the charges of the traffic engineer. And so we had a conversation, and I got a rough estimate from him as to how much that would add to the overall project. And I worked through, worked through a draft project budget that was supplied to me by Kim and Gene, and this is my best estimate of where we stand right now. And if we want to develop this further, the deadline for the grant application is March 1st, and we would need to really start working on this immediately, so we could discuss in the Infrastructure Committee, which is a week from Friday. Again, a council workshop on the 6th for potential resolution to be considered for adoption February 20th, and that's a prelude to the grant application. Any grant application is going to want the elected officials to have signed off on wanting to do a project. So that's, that's our timeframe for getting this done. It's really tight. It's not possible. I think that the partnerships we, partners we have in the community I think that the partnerships we, partners we have in the community have helped us kind of prime the, prime the pump and get us to a point where we're not, where we don't have to think this thing up from scratch. They've thought through a great deal. There is a lot of good planning fabric that supports this, both in local plans and in the Townships Plan and the regional and county plans that all intersect and sort of keep reinforcing the same ideas over and over again. So I think from a conceptual level, it really, it resonates very well. We just have to work out the details of this.
And if council was to give a nod to move forward with, develop basically your next steps, moving those forward for this grant application, what on the administrative agenda downshifts to make room for this?
Well, we have ambitious administrative agendas. You could look at the Finance and Administration's Committee Project List, the Infrastructure Committee Project List, Public Safety Project List. It just means that we would, there would be four or five weeks where we wouldn't be starting on the next thing on those lists.
Okay.
Can I say specifically what's getting stalled? Well, basically everything.
So.
But it's, it's a valuable, valuable thing, that prioritizing projects, I think, is a decision to be made by the council.
That's why I'm asking.
Two questions. The first is, do you think this will take four to five weeks at the office?
No, it's, we have four to five weeks to, between now and.
Okay, to the deadline, but it's not that. Four is. And the second question is about the scope, because you mentioned the local and the regional plan. We had discussed sharrows and incorporating the larger Montgomery Plan. Are the sharrows included in this twenty to thirty?
So what's the sharrows?
Sharrows are the, Kimberly, do you have a picture? It's the painted, they're not bike lanes, they're kind of reminders that you're sharing the road with bikers.
They're painted on the road.
There, behind you. The sharrows came up both in the two thousand five.
Two thousand six.
And then the twenty sixteen, no, not twenty sixteen, just the two thousand six plan, and then in the Bike MOCO recommendations.
I think we, the quick answer is no, and I think we should, we should definitely keep it on our radar, and the reason it was no is because I remember discussing that there's a timeframe that you have to use the grant money in.
That's why.
And since we're probably at some point going to be repaving North Narberth Avenue, it doesn't make sense to paint sharrows on North Narberth Avenue and then come back eighteen months later and rip the academy.
And this is where I'm at, because we had asked, can you kind of ask her that and say, can we use it after the paving? And the answer is no.
There's a time to usage of funds. It just means that we could go back again in the next cycle and ask for it.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
When you say construct bike facilities on Windsor Avenue, can you just expand on that just a little bit? What type of facilities and what does that mean?
Well, we'll talk about those options in more detail with the traffic engineer, but generally speaking, it could be something as simple as sharrows. That's probably the lowest cost solution. And then there is a dedicated bike lane that would be on a road cross-section with two sides of parking, so it's not, it's not sort of the gold standard dedicated bike lane because you're traveling between moving traffic and parked cars and there's conflicts with both. And then there's the gold standard bike lane where there's no parking on one side of the street and you've got four to six foot of width that's painted marked and it's just dedicated for bike usage. And there might be permutations of that design that I haven't considered yet after the traffic engineer talks to us about it, but I asked him to give me like, hey, what's your, what's your biggest number at this point estimate wise? And I'll bake it into this conversation we'll have tonight, and when we convene again, I'll, I'll focus in more scrutiny on, on a good number.
Okay, thank you.
So I would like it if council could, if someone would make a motion or a resolution that, you know, we are indicating for the office to prioritize resources to move forward with a plan that we'd be able to meet the grant deadline.
Before we do that, can I just, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I just want to make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm supportive of this, and I support our biking community, and I'm, I have organic buy-in. I did my own homework, and I just want to point something out from the process. It's not to, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this, like, tonight, we're, it's not an obstructionist thing, but I do think that we're, we're approaching a point where we need to make a priority list, and we're, I don't know if we're one meeting, we're eight meetings shy, but that's on the horizon. I just want us to be honest with ourselves, and I'm going to do this, so it's okay, but we're picking one thing and giving it priority at the expense of a lot of other things. For example, sidewalks, like our walkability, our borough sidewalks are important, one more example, our parks. Again, I'll say it just one time tonight, core municipal services. I just, I think that going, like, one more, all right, but I just think that we need to get out of the habit, and I'm an offender myself, but I think as a body, we need to get out of the habit of ad hoc picking priorities at whatever comes up because it's, it's pushed by X, Y, or Z, and we need to really make a list so we're not displacing things and things aren't given arbitrary, or a lot of this is just luck of the draw. So I just think it speaks to, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with, I'm going to vote for it, I know, I know the community wants it, and I respect my constituents. I am, the, the other 30% of my brain is like, we're, we're picking the winner and we're putting everybody else on hold again. And it's, it's a little arbitrary, and I just want to speak to that. I said my piece, you know, I'm supportive.
You know, I think everyone's on board that we have, we have a list. I think at the last meeting, we discussed adding some more things to that list to make sure that it was comprehensive. We're working through our rules. This memo that you're receiving is really, it's not just a memo, it's part of a new structure of the office being able to have the time to research an idea, to give you a scope of what you are going to be prioritizing, then you prioritize it, then the office comes back with sort of, they do a design phase, they come back with, this is what it's going to cost you to do it, and then at that point, we can choose to do it or not. And by breaking it up into those pieces, hopefully, we're going to address a lot of your concerns over the next couple of weeks.
But I guess the difference is that here, we're just picking one thing at random and we're giving it priority, and Sean just told us that there's a list of ten, thirty, a hundred other things that are important, that are going to be put on hold, and it's not, I don't think this is going to be our final process where Sean prepares this document for one thing. And, you know, we need to come up with a global list and start ranking things as a group, is what I'm, and I disagree with anything you just said. You're right.
I get it.
But I just think that we need, this is a, this is a, not, not really, this is half of a line cut. We're taking this and we're putting this at the top of the line, and I just think it would make me feel better if going forward, we could come up, and the reason why I think it's okay is because we don't have, we haven't set up a good line either. Who, what, what's first, what's last? But I think that this is indicative of a larger policy that we need to have a line so that there's order and process and fairness in decisions. But we're still in an ad hoc mode, so this is how we make decisions. I've made decisions like this. I'm okay with this. I'm with, I'm, I want this. I just think that we need to, a year from now, it would be nice if there's a process where cutting the line isn't something that we need to do because we have a process for processing things.
Great. Go ahead, Bob.
Make a motion, and it's quite well made. I think I see everybody not in agreement to that.
Yes.
So I would move that the Borough Council authorize the office to implement the proposal for bike infrastructure improvements with a budget estimate of twenty to thirty thousand dollars, with an estimated eligible grant funding of twenty thousand dollars, which would include a borough match of 20% in kind for, that could include engineering design services, direct municipal work, construction, and installation.
Is there a second?
One second.
All right, any further discussion now that that's on the table?
I just want us to use the word multimodality. I love bikes, it's all about bikes, we get the bike thing, but we need to understand that there are other types of wheel items that will use that link. Thank you.
I think it's a really great thing to be aware of the developments in the greater community, and this ties us in to MOCO in a very beneficial way, so I'm glad we're doing this now. And thank you for bringing this up this time last year.
Yes.
Bringing it up this time?
Well, I think we finally.
Five years.
We've got a lot of progress in the borough to get not only this proposal to a position where it can move forward, but also to get our administration to a point where they can move something like this forward. So it's, it's all.
We're seeing the dividends of what we've been working on pay off.
And just one brief comment. I hear you. I appreciate that we're being opportunistic with this grant. I think we're really primed, almost in a way that we weren't this time last year, in that the budget estimations given, now that we have Ed and a professional staff that can do these things, that this time last year, we weren't in that position. And it would have cost the borough something. I think in addition to just the cultural shift in the borough with new residents coming, that, that this is a nice first gesture of multimodal, Gigi, I hear you.
Stake in the ground.
Stake in the ground, literally and figuratively. Yeah, this is the first of saying economic development, multimodal.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Genetically, all right. The office can get started on that. We're going to go back to the, we'll go in order. A E, motion for advertisement of a zoning amendment.
Should we have a discussion on that?
We're going to put the motion on the table.
Okay. President Mutarik, I move that Borough Council authorize the Borough Manager to advertise ordinance ten XX, I think it's fourteen, in ordinance amending the Narberth Borough Zoning Code, Chapter 124, to require apartment building approval by special exception instead of conditional use, to amend the setback frontage, building width, height, and first-floor use requirements for apartment and mixed-use buildings along the Windsor Avenue, or Windsor Avenue, and to amend Section 124-401D to provide corner lot standards in the 5B District, and to permit the modification of such standards by special exception.
Do we have seconds so we can begin the discussion?
Second.
All right, it's on the table. Jim, I'm going to let you give the overview here, because John can support you.
Sure, let me just separate these, if you don't mind. The, it's my OCD code out. My only concern with, I think that there's, there's three things baked into this particular motion. I think two are, are not really things that I think require much debate, but I have, you know, I don't really know how my colleagues are going to feel, but I have a major concern. For me, it's an eleven out of ten. I first of all want to apologize to my constituents. Maya Culpa, I did something that I am not proud of, and in the spring, I voted for some zoning amendments that I, I should have been more diligent and less, less trusting on face value. I don't know what the words I'm searching for are, but I voted for a change to approval of apartment buildings that shifted it to this conditional use process that the town has seen play out over the past few months, and a change in building height, but that's not the subject of this particular motion. And my concern about the conditional use process that we have gone through as a town for this last apartment is, it's multifaceted. I think that, I was not on council when council passed the Form-Based Zoning Code, but I did show up at council meetings and I advocated for it, and if I was on council, I would have voted for it. That said, I'm concerned at the pace with which we've modified zoning in the past year. I'm concerned that we spent thirteen thousand dollars on attorney's fees to modify zoning, and I'm concerned that these hearings consume a tremendous amount of council time and borough resources. The hearings cost approximately two thousand five hundred dollars in, in court reporter fees alone. They don't present council with the ability to deny a project or approve a project up or down. It charges council with what I would describe, and I'm sure colleagues will, well, somebody will picket my words, but it turns us into what I would describe as a, it turns council into a de facto zoning hearing board, where council is making policy and zoning decisions on a project-by-project basis for apartments, and it gives the public one expectation, what we're able to do or not do is extremely constrained and limited. It's been divisive for our community. We are behind on council right now, and it's not because of any council members or our president, or our vice president, or our professional staff, but our November and December were consumed by hours and hours and hours of conditional use hearing and thousands and thousands of dollars. And I'm concerned, not only do, you know, I don't feel qualified that I am the person weighing in on what we're doing on this level of zoning. I would like it to be in front of, for example, a zoning hearing board, where we can put it in a room full of experts and not in front of me. I, where I, when I, look, I was, when I ran for office, I ran on an open and honest platform and I, this is, this was my weakest area, and the voters still put me here. I don't know what I'm doing, and I don't, when it comes to zoning and making these decisions, I, I feel that I lack the skills and the resources to make smart decisions and to vote on it the right way, and to get into a conditional use setting where I'm deciding what little nuanced changes are going to go on an apartment building? When we have a zoning hearing board, we could shift this to? And my last big problem, like, concern is, is if hypothetically, in the next month or two, we get three more applications, that could be six more evenings where instead of us being council and working on bikes and streets and sewers and sidewalks and ADA and you name it, we're going to rush through our business and focus on conditional use hearings. We meet twenty-one times a year. If we have two more applications this spring and we have six hearings, that means in a six-month period, half a year, we'll have spent one-third of a year's worth of council time on conditional use. I respect the Planning Commission, I'm friends with, with most of the people on the Planning Commission, and I like the Planning Commission, but I don't like that, I think that this is a risky policy that really is a resource drain, and I feel that it's going, it has the real threat of derailing our agenda this year and us spending endless hours not doing our jobs at the expense of hearings when we have a hearing board. It puts the least equipped, some, some people like me that are least equipped to handle these specific situations in charge of it at the expense of day-to-day council business when we have a board that could handle it. And this is a resolution that President Mutarik had, it was not my directive, there's been some disinformation out there, but President Mutarik directed that the council, that the solicitor draft a resolution that would essentially take the conditions that are applied to apartment buildings and shift it from conditional use hearing, the current policy and all the time involved, and shift it to the zoning hearing board under essentially the same standards. So all you're doing is you're taking it from council and giving it to a smaller, more expert, a body with more experts on it, and alleviating the very real chance that we could become in 2019 the conditional use council. So while I generally give great deference to the Planning Commission, and I'm going to finish off with this, but the Planning Commission was enlarged and emboldened when we passed the Form-Based Code, and that's great, and I legitimately, I actually physically applauded when it passed seven to nothing. But now that we've passed this code, I have two thoughts. One, I feel that we're undermining the legitimacy of how great the code is because we tweak it way, the way we're changing it so frequently is very confusing. And two, oh, forgive me, with, with the Form-Based Code, I just, I lost my train of thought, and I apologize, but.
Back to it, and I know, so this is on the table. I'd like to ask next Mr. Walco to point out, is there any, would you say that Mr. Nixon's summary is correct, that we're moving what is currently a condition as it comes to council to what would be a special exception here by the zoning hearing board? Are there any other rights or opportunities that the borough government is sort of giving up by doing that? Or any new rights that maybe we could take advantage of to the education of the other council members considering this?
Sure. So the way that.
So, the way that, and to back up again, to explain the special exception versus conditional use, I think most real estate attorneys will tell you that it is the same standard. It just determines who makes the decision. Special exception is the zoning hearing board, conditional use is with council. But there's not, it's the same standards as we heard, the prima facie, if they meet those standards, the zoning hearing board should then grant that special exception. Just as a conditional use hearing, if they meet the code, council should grant that special, conditional use. Cancel, council for a special exception doesn't hear it. Again, it goes to the zoning hearing board. So council loses a certain amount of control to be the party to decide the ultimate grant or denial, and they lose the direct control as to any conditions that they would want imposed. However, it is very common for council to still make recommendations for conditions that they would recommend to the zoning hearing board, that if the zoning hearing board was to grant a special exception, that council would like to have these conditions to apply. So you still have an opportunity to ask for conditions, but again, it comes down to the zoning hearing board as to whether or not they'd like to have those as part of any granting. Council can actually oppose. Instead of sitting as a judicial body, council can appear in opposition before the zoning hearing board and have a party, or council can support a decision. So again, instead of, instead of being the judge, you can be an advocate on one side or the other and request that certain conditions apply. The Planning Commission is an advisory body to this council, and at any time this council wants the input or the opinion or the Planning Commission to investigate anything related to the SADO code or the zoning code, they can ask that the Planning Commission take that up. So again, a special exception application could be submitted instead of conditional use. The Borough Manager could advise council of that, and council could direct that the Planning Commission review that application and issue recommendations, a level of opinion, they could review it. And they would still come before the Planning Commission as part of the land development process as well. It's my understanding, it's my experience, that the applicants normally will try to meet with the Planning Commission because they want to get the Planning Commission's recommendation, even before the zoning hearing board. They want to know that council's in favor of an application. So I don't, I don't see this as a substantive change to the code. I see this as more of a procedural change to the code. Everything else that was in here, when Mr. Nixon read this long title, that was in the ordinance that was in January approved for advertisement. It was literally cut and pasted into this ordinance with a different citation in the code to have it be by special exception and not conditional use. So the substance isn't different. I think the discussion again for council tonight would be whether or not you want to make that procedural change, as Mr. Nixon explained.
So what I'd like to do is structure it a bit, because there's still a second discussion in terms of the process of how we do this and, you know, how it sort of percolates through to become law. But let's first talk.
And if I could mention to that, so then, if this ordinance is approved for advertisement, it would then go to the Planning Commission as is required under the municipal planning code and the county planning commission for their review and their comment.
But I'd like to, I'd like to hold that, those, any comments regarding the process, we'll get to that, we'll get to that. Let's first, if we could, talk about, is there any discussion on council about whether we want to move these conditional use hearings to special exception? I'm going to say, is there anybody who is opposed to this idea?
I'm opposed that the two issues that you just mentioned are intertwined. So I'm not able to talk about why I oppose this ordinance and why I oppose the tabling of this ordinance at this time, and why I will be voting no on this ordinance amendment. And so I would need to then explain.
Go ahead.
But I'm not at all in opposition to special exception or conditional use by right. I think, you know, these are all ways in which applicants get approval for projects through, under our zoning ordinance. I'm very proud in Narberth that we were able to pass a Form-Based Code two years ago. This is something that they're striving to do in Lower Merion right now, and this is something that I think we can all be very proud of. It resulted immediately in the cessation of teardowns, unnecessary teardowns in our neighborhoods. This code has protected our residential neighborhoods in Narberth, and that was going on. There were opportunistic developers buying up homes, tearing them down, and building new homes on the same site, oversized, outscaled, and not at all in keeping of the character of our community. And this ordinance, when we passed it in April 2016, stopped that immediately. It's no longer possible. It did something, it did something else, this, our Form-Based Zoning Code. And I'm speaking to this because I'm, because Mr. Nixon brought it up, and I feel as though, I'm very happy and comfortable that we have seeded very modest economic opportunities for property owners in our business districts, near our train stations, near our transportation centers, to invest in our community. The investments, the small modest investments that we're seeing coming to our community would be welcomed by, I would guess 99% of the other boroughs in the Commonwealth. They would love to have this kind of economic investment happening in their community. I would also venture to say that if we were tearing down an apartment building and replacing it with a commercial parking lot, that we would see a tremendous amount of opposition to that kind of development. And so in fact, what we've done with this Form-Based Code is reverse that probability. We're creating a more appropriate kind of building and livable landscape in our community than we maybe, you know, currently have. So this is, if you reverse the scenario and say, well, I'm going to build a commercial office building with a parking lot across from your house, the person would, you know, I would rent, suspect our neighbors would be kind of upset by that. Most communities would love to have residential building types replacing commercial or industrial building types. That's just pretty commonly accepted. As for this ordinance, what the ordinance on the table does is it intertwines two settled, well-reviewed, well-thought-through, well-discussed ordinance amendments that the Planning Commission worked on for several months, that apply new standards to downtown apartment buildings, standards that we don't yet have in place that will improve the outcomes that we could get on those Windsor Avenue sites. It also, this ordinance also creates by special exception, conditions on corner properties on the Montgomery Avenue corridor that will basically do what Jim suggested. It will defer to the appropriate judicial body, the ability to approve those developments on Montgomery Avenue. Those won't be coming to the Borough Council by conditional use. I believe it's appropriate in our role as council members to represent our community in being involved in reviewing certain visible development, so that the developers have accountability and we have accountability to our constituents. Now, I agree with you, Jim. None of us are experts on zoning. It is, but we have fortunate to live in a borough where we can appoint to our boards and commissions talented, well-qualified people to help us make with those decisions. And in this instance, we have a planning commission that wrote very detailed and lengthy recommendation on the conditional use application, and I believe as a council member, it's my duty to those volunteers and to their, and to defer to their expertise. And it is our, it is our role, and it's appropriate role, to sort of, to sit in this sort of quasi-judicial manner and actually reflect the recommendation of the Planning Commission. I think that's fine. I think it's appropriate especially in our downtown. Now, there are places throughout the borough, like in other districts, the 3A, the 3B, the 4A, the 4B, that are not commercial overlays, that are not near transportation, that are not in the densest part of towns, where it could probably work either by right to just allow the developers to follow the regulations or to go to the zoning, to the zoning hearing board by special exception, and I'm in favor of that. So, so that's my basic take on this ordinance. But the bigger problem that I have is that we currently have in the pipeline already two ordinances that do what we've asked, that we're asked, that the Planning Commission has asked us to do. And those two ordinances are live, and they should be scheduled for a hearing. They should have been advertised and scheduled for a hearing already. Then if there's this next issue we want to do, this.
It's one ordinance, Bob, actually.
Well, it's one ordinance. It's two issues in one ordinance. But now we have a less well-examined issue, which is where should, where should apartment, residential development in the form of apartment buildings, where should it be approved by conditional use, and where should it be approved by special exception? That's a nuanced question that I don't think we are prepared to decide on. I understand that we have very incredibly skilled and qualified support, you know, our solicitor, but I also know that the Planning Commission, the way we have built trust with our commissions and boards all throughout this past council, the past two councils, is by deferring most of the time to their recommendations. We do it with our REC Board, our police, our public, our safety commission, our planning commission, our Shea Tree commissions, all of our boards and commissions, we defer to the residents. That's the amazing thing about Narberth. We have all these volunteers who are involved in helping us. And I would like to continue to defer to their judgment, and they're telling us that they would like to be involved in this discussion. They asked us, just to actually ask them for their help. They said, we didn't even know you guys were having a concern, the Planning Commission said to us, we didn't know you were having this concern, that you were feeling burdened by this conditional use, this conditional use details. Burden. And will, and where appropriate, we'll assign them, we'll change the designation to by rights, to special exception, or we'll retain conditional use. For example, with institutional, you know, commercial, I mean, institutional buildings, the adaptive reuse of institutional buildings, that's an appropriate place to maintain, retain the conditional use. Maybe there are other places, but this is nuanced and complicated, and I just feel wrapping this one extra detail around two things that we've already got moving is not appropriate, and in particular, because the Planning Commission hasn't even been able to advise us. And I know by ordinance, they will be, have to review this, but I know that when we get their review letter back on this ordinance, if there's going to, they're not going to be happy about it. They've already written several pages of letters saying this isn't, they're not happy about it. So I'm going to vote no, and I wish we would just table this.
So let me just offer a little process perspective, and then I'll go right to Michelle.
Yeah, I want one more comment when it's appropriate.
Everybody gets a turn.
And hearing that, you know, time was of the essence. We know that, in some sense, because we know additional applications will be coming. And I asked the solicitor to prepare language so that council would have an opportunity to make a decision if council chose to make a decision. I didn't want to come to this meeting and have a discussion and then have nothing to do. So I just, we can slice and dice this in a number of different ways. And with that, Michelle.
I thought you were going to suggest some ways to slice and dice. So I'm already.
I want to hear what everybody's thoughts are before I.
So it's interesting that this is taking so much time. In December, we passed unanimously, we unanimously as council voted to move, to move these two section amendments to advertise them, okay? There is a bunch of substantive modifications to the apartment building and mixed-use buildings, frontages, building heights, setbacks, first floor uses, multiple. And then that's in 5A, and then there's some 5B substantive zoning amendments, frontage, garage entrances, site plan standards, et cetera. We all agreed on that, we were unanimous. There's really no disagreement. We wanted to move that forward. That was December 19. Solicitor Walco informed us that there would need to be a 30-day review period, and because of the timing of meetings, that we would not be able to advertise and vote on this until February meeting. So that was great. Separately, I know we have several times discussed, less intently and less formally, the idea that we'd like to see a shift away from so much conditional use. We think we have a glut of it in our code right now, okay? And so we all agree on that too, really, I don't think, so we don't actually disagree substantively on anything. The question is, does it make sense to put that in here now, to add that, fold that into what we already agreed on in December and move it all forward as one package? John says he thinks we can do it. It's not really a substantive change, it's a procedural change.
Well, this is a new ordinance, so.
Oh, so you think this, that we can't vote on this in February?
You can vote on this in February.
Okay, so, but so, but don't, isn't there a 30-day period?
We have 30 days between, if I get this to the communications by the end of the week, I have 30 days on this.
From now?
Yes.
So we would, so it does, it does delay the vote on what we agreed on in December 19.
That's never been advertised.
There's a different ordinance. So the ordinance in, the ordinance in December.
We've voted unanimously.
We could, wait, I'm sorry. We've had the 30-day period, review period for the original 1014. Almost, it's almost told, right?
Yeah.
My point is, we could, we could vote on the original 1014 at our next meeting.
Yes, if council doesn't want to go forward on this ordinance, I would submit the original two ordinance as was approved at the last meeting by the Planning Commission by the end of this week.
And we could vote on it.
And that would give us until February meeting.
What's the earliest we can vote on the modified one with the, with the, with the procedural stuff?
The same.
The same.
Because there wasn't 30 days from December to now.
Right, so that's not a problem. It doesn't cause a delay. So, that, thank you. That's what I thought. I'm still blathering. Sorry, sorry. I get to elaborate too. So it's getting late, we're getting a little silly. So I think then, then it doesn't cause a delay, but here's, here's the thing. So it doesn't seem like this is something that we should be like tearing our hair out about, okay? I guess my thought is, a couple of points. You do know the special exception costs as much. They have to have a transcript and they have an attorney too, right?
I don't think it would be as long.
So just, no, we're not saving money by pushing things.
We have less hours, less hours.
As far as what's in the pipeline, I asked Sean at the Finance and Administration Committee meeting what we had in terms of realistic applications, that he's aware of. I mean, something can always pop out of the blue, but things that he's aware of that might be coming through that would be under conditional use. And he pointed to two at most possibilities, one of which is a civic institutional. So it's really one, if we, if we were to pull out the procedural change now, put that on a different track, it would be like, probably take another two, four, four weeks? I don't know, John would do that. If we were to pull that out and vote to advertise the special exception to conditional use, if we were to pull that out and let the Planning Commission look at that separately, I guess is what I'm saying, I think it would perhaps lead to at most six weeks, eight weeks? Oh, no.
I could easily move forward with an ordinance that just changed it to special exception and an ordinance that separates the Windsor Avenue 5B change that was approved in December. You could be in a situation then where at the same time, you're going to have an ordinance that's essentially obsolete because the citation's different, because you're.
Right, right.
But the substance is.
It does, I mean, then, then, right. So then, as part of the second, there would also need to be amending the ordinance that we just passed. I think it's a little awkward procedurally, but I think it doesn't risk a flood of new projects coming in. I think like at most, we might see another conditional use hearing that we wouldn't have otherwise seen, and I feel like I can live with that, because it's, I mean, if there's a commitment to say, look, this needs to go to Planning Commission for quick review, you know, quick, you know, do the best you can to give us your, go through the code, tell us, you know, which things you think are important to keep as conditional use, and then we can have their advice on that. I mean, I feel like we've got some thoughtful letters, including from the president of the Planning Commission, saying, look, I'd really like a chance to be able to give this some thought and go through it, and I respect his input and his efforts and his work a lot. And so to me, taking the risk that maybe another hearing would come through and that it's a little awkward procedurally, like that's something, that's a price I'd be willing to pay to show that respect to the Planning Commission and sort of just, just put the brakes on that one, just like, put that on a slightly separate track and pick it up again in a month or so, or six weeks, or eight weeks, or whatever it is.
Gigi.
My concern, and you said it yourself, is that other things could pop up. I don't want anything else to pop up. I want to be able to have a full understanding of what our actions and our intention is. While I understand that it's procedural, John explained it very well, it's two sides of the same coin. So you spoke of the happiness of the Planning Commission. Now, you and I have been at this a long time, brother.
You said you were happy.
You did. They would be unhappy. They would be unhappy.
Oh, okay.
They would be unhappy. We have 4,634 people that we make decisions for, by, with, and about their happiness and the impact all of this has on them, in so much as this conversation. and the impact all of this has on them, in so much as this conversation, the decisions that come out of Planning Commission, and I've been in this room where we have not taken the recommendations of boards and commissions. That has happened. Maybe not specifically, I can't really remember whether it was Planning Commission, but it has happened. For the, this council made different decisions for different reasons. I feel if it's procedural, for me, the practicality of it, it's the same. If it's procedural, it's the same. As long as there are safeguards in place that allow a review, somebody with more professional skill sets to review this, that's where I would prefer to go. And to the letters, I understand those letters quite well. I would have appreciated those letters, and maybe there was just a miscommunication of where this one piece was fitting into, into the ordinance tonight, that, you know, this is a habit. We get the letters three, three and a half, four hours before the meeting, and we're supposed to come into the meeting and have this conversation all over again. And it's about prioritizing. It is about stacking what we see. It is about those conversations of what the priorities at this table are for the whole of Norbert. And I understand not understanding zoning. When I came here, and you know it, I begged and said, "Please don't do it," and you did it to me anyway. And it has taken all of this time to have some peripheral, brief, not particularly deep, understanding of zoning and what we're trying to do. I do, I agree that there are risks on both sides of this, risks in waiting and risks of leaving it. And again, I always want everything, right? One side and the other. I would like it to move to special exception. That's how I see it. Thank you.
Rob. I hear what you're saying, Gigi and Jim, and I appreciate that there could be more efficiencies that we could identify. My view is that there's not enough of a reason to rush on this right now, and I would rather wait maybe a month to get the input of Planning Commission to some determination as to which cases would be special exception and which cases would be conditional use. The way I see it, the civic institutional 198 Elm, that's going to be hearing anyway. The Havford projects are by right. So I don't, I don't see, like, a crushing number of hearings coming down the pipeline, so much so that I think we need to rush this through. So my view is to wait, to gather more input on how to distinguish between special exception cases and conditional use cases.
I agree, Rob. I need to restate it.
Can I say, if I've heard something that could also keep the process a little bit more quicker, and that is that you don't really seem to care if it's conditional use or special exception for the 3C, the 4A, and 5B districts. Now, when the Form-Based Code was originally passed, those were by right, and that was moved to conditional use. Now, obviously, Windsor Avenue 5A downtown district is a little bit more visible. Maybe you want to keep that conditional use and do something with the others, whether it's by right or special exception, or there's maybe a gray area in there.
John, let me ask you a question. If we moved, if council moved to table this ordinance that's currently here, then what we advertised on December 19th continues?
I would submit that to the Planning Commission's by the end of the week, and we would have a hearing on that at the February meeting.
Okay. And if we, if we moved to pass this revised amendment for advertising, it would, it would add that one component, which is moving special exceptions, or conditional uses to special exceptions, and the same timeline would apply.
Correct.
Right? So then, a third path would be somehow, this is tabled, but then in some other way, what I'm hearing is, that request goes to the Planning Commission for it to come back to us, and then something that we could pass in March in a more nuanced or well-reviewed way of exactly what changes from conditional use to special exception.
If Planning Commission was able to address this at their February meeting, make recommendations, they can put another ordinance together at the February meeting.
There you go.
And then have a new ordinance in March. Again, that ordinance in March is probably going to amend the ordinance that just passed in February. Again, that's what we've been doing.
Yeah, okay. Let's make sure everybody understands what we're talking about.
I think, because I think the common ground I see among all of us is that none of us are zoning experts, other than our solicitor, with the exception of our solicitor. And because none of us are zoning experts, none of us really know what the nuanced implications are or the unintended consequences might be of shifting from conditional use to special exception. However, our Planning Commission does think they know what the difference is, and in fact, there's an opportunity for you, perhaps, for it to have our solicitor join them and, you know, help provide them with information they might not have, so that they can then provide us with a nuanced recommendation about how to do this properly. I think that, that's just what I'm suggesting. I don't know how we can vote on this and conclude that we know this is best now without their advice. This is what we depend on, on our commission.
I see that we're moving somewhere. Can I just respond to, I remember what I was going to say earlier, and then I put this to bed, but, look, I knew when I read this tonight, this probably wasn't going to pass. And, you know, it probably won't. I, I still think it's a mistake, and, you know, it's okay. It happens. I think there's a risk in waiting. I think the reason to do this is that if a couple of applications come in, you risk derailing council. We are behind right now, big time, because we spent November and December in conditional use land, and we upset the town over a matter of which we have very little control, and I don't think we'll accomplish very much. I remember my comments with the Form-Based Code, where I lost my train of thought, and they are that they geared up for the Form-Based Code, but now that that code is done, we, I think we need to slow down. And we need to, I, look, this is in no way insulting to the Planning Commission, but we're the dog and they're the tail. And, you know, I don't want to defer on this issue. You know, you can shake your head, but council has the final say. That's the law. And I would, they, we have a policy now that ignores, it's blind to the resources of time. And that makes me, I just, I have a big prob, I know this isn't going to happen, but it's like, well, this is the perfect thing to do if we could pause life, but the earth keeps moving around the sun, and to eat all this time in meetings, I just think, and money, it's just, it's, it's just not prudent, it's not worth the benefit. And I don't think you're really seeing any benefit, and I don't, the Planning Commission is undermining public confidence in the Form-Based Code by spending $13,000 in 2018 on changing the Form-Based Code before the ink dried on previous month's changes. And, you know, I'm trying to shake things up with this. That's what, that's my goal, and that's what I'm doing right now. And I made my peace, I hope and pray that if we don't act the way I think we should, that we act as soon as possible, because time is of the essence, to not have a policy in place where if we get applications for development, we risk taking the Norbert government and dedicating a third of its time in a year to zoning issues alone, because we've already been zoning heavy for the past year.
I can't leave the public with this impression. First of all, I'm really proud and honored to do this work. I think most all of us are proud and honored to sit at this table and to do this work on behalf of the borough. To me, this is not a burden. We're spending less time on council now than we did four years ago or six years ago, and this is delightful work. I'm proud to do it. I'm proud to sit here through the conditional use hearings and represent this community. I don't want to leave the public with the, with the notion that we're spending more time on building and zoning than has ever occurred before. From 1940 to 2016, there were hundreds and hundreds of ordinance amendments in that zoning ordinance. Zoning ordinances are amended by every municipality continuously. That is the role and duty of a borough council. That is the role, and that's why the municipality's planning code requires that we have a planning commission to do that work. This goes on and on and on. This will go way on and on, long afterward at the table, regardless of who's here. That's the nature of a municipality. That is core service of a municipality. I just need to say.
Like our parks and sidewalks and everything else, that's been in effect over eight years.
That's right. The zoning ordinances are core.
I'm going to only take questions for the solicitor from this point.
Thank you. John, so, I'm a little confused, but you'll straighten me out. If we decide to forego this as written in front of us tonight, and that, as Bob suggested, the Planning Commission would have to go back and give us their recommendations regarding these changes and the nuances that Bob presented, would that then have to go to the Montgomery County Planning Commission for review before it comes back to us? Tell me the process. And I really need a clear timetable, because, you know, this can't be like March and then April, and nobody did the work.
So it seems to me that Planning Commission doesn't need to sit down and look at this ordinance. Eventually, they're going to do that, as when it's motioned to advertise.
You asked it.
What really needs, what I'm hearing, the discussion really needs is the Planning Commission just needs to generally communicate to council that a recommendation, unattached to any ordinance, as to what should be special exception, what should be by right, what should be conditional use. Maybe they do think some of these things should go back to by right. Maybe they wanted to keep Windsor Avenue conditional use, but not attached to this ordinance. I would instruct, I would advise that council should instruct the Planning Commission to, to review that and issue recommendation to this council. The council can then take that recommendation, if they so choose, to then put into an ordinance form that incorporates, if they desire to, that, that recommendation.
And the timeline by which you think that could be reasonably...
And really, speaking to Mr. Nixon's concern, I believe the Planning Commission's going to do one better than this ordinance. I think they're going to find ways to reduce the amount of involvement that the planning, that the council has in these decisions. I think they probably are going to reduce the amount of applications.
Well, the ones that got us here, I hope so.
Absolutely.
So, and I would, I recommend that the advice be for the Planning Commission to explain why they think the different choices are necessary for that. If they meet, I believe, the first week in February, if they were to get me an ordinance or the recommendation the week before business hearing, even the Monday of, since I believe it would be somewhat, hopefully, just technical changes to make what is special exception and was, because again, everything else here was cut and paste from the substance they talked about before, I'd be able to have that in place by the next meeting. So if they wanted to do that, we could have an ordinance to be advertised, motion to be advertised at the February meeting and then enacted.
Voted in March.
Assuming there's 30 days between the February and the March. I mean, I'd have to see, I'd have to see the 30 days. As long as the 30 days between the February and March meeting.
All right. So all in favor, all in favor of approving AE a motion to advertise ordinance 1014 zoning amendments?
The one that I introduced.
The one that you introduced just now that we've been discussing. Say aye?
No.
Aye.
Okay, and all opposed?
Can we do that again?
No, it's Jim in favor.
Oh, I thought he was joking. It's me and six no's.
So that is closed. Before I move on to the next agenda item...
And as a result, I'm going to be advertising the ordinance that was approved in December before the January meeting.
Yes, please.
Or I'll work with the borough to see what happens.
Now, someone would like to make a motion to ask the Planning Commission to look at the special exception versus conditional use versus by right components of the zoning code, and come back to us with a recommendation by the February business meeting.
I'll subdue that.
Is that related only to apartment buildings?
Someone going to second this?
I'll second Jim's movement.
Second, and to answer the solicitor's question.
But that's fine.
Should they be focusing purely on special exception for apartment buildings?
Yeah. Do you mind, may I amend or state?
Sure, Bob, you like doing that. Go ahead.
Right, well, this listener's asking us for clarification. Go ahead.
We've done that 10 times.
Go ahead, clarify it for him.
It's yours.
No, but you want to clarify his question.
Bob, go ahead. Clarify.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we're asking them to do is to read through the zoning ordinance and to, and to help us reduce council's involvement in zoning approvals.
For?
Period.
Period.
Across the board, throughout the, throughout the ordinance. It's a single, it's a singular task with a, with a specific outcome that we're looking for.
And where appropriate?
And where appropriate. I don't think we want to wind up in a zoning hearing board meeting 15 times a year.
They will, but they will, they will determine where it's appropriate, whether it's special exception or conditional use.
They'll recommend, they'll recommend where it's appropriate.
They will make a, they will come to a determination and make a recommendation.
All right. So they hear it, it's a loud beat, they can watch. All in favor?
Aye.
Someone seconded, oh, wait, it was seconded.
I seconded. Jim made the motion, I seconded.
Okay, thank you very much. So now, let's go to a, this is Finance and Administration.
So this is the 114 Forest?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask if there's a member of Finance Administration that would feel comfortable introducing this, because I am not.
Is it just reading?
Yep, go for it, Rob.
Okay. I move that Borough Council approved Resolution 2019-001 for conditional use intended sketch plan approval. 114 Forest Avenue.
Just, just do conditional use alone, and then we'll do tentative sketch plan.
Okay, do you have that, Jim? I gave you everything, sorry.
What, what of it? This is, it's not here or submitting, it's not in the...
Sean, can you help Rob? There's two things that should be for, be for council related to 114. One is...
Sketch plan and...
The first should be, because one is sort of predominant for the other, because we need to decide what council would like to do regarding the conditional use application and to make a decision on that conditional use application. And separately, then, moving forward, there needs to be a resolution for the tentative sketch plan approval, if you get to that point.
Yeah, I'm not sure which one you're...
So, so I think what is before council would be a motion to either grant or deny the conditional use application of Norbert Associates LP and 123 Old Investors LP. Subject to conditions.
Rob, would you like to make the, just state, you'd like to put the motion on the table as just read by the solicitor?
Okay, I would like to...
And this is, yeah, this is, this is...
I would like to put the motion on the table as read by the solicitor.
Okay, just go to second.
Second?
Okay. So now, we have on the table to, a motion to approve the conditional use application for 114 Forest Avenue.
So it is a motion for approval or for grant?
That's right.
Said it would grant for tonight.
Yes, and I, this is for approving the conditional use application for 114 Forest Avenue. I believe there are 13 conditions.
That's right. That grant would be subject to conditions. If council would like, I could read those conditions or paraphrase those conditions.
Anyone interested in having them read?
Paraphrase and read.
Paraphrase.
So that would be that after the hearing, the, it's my recommendation, based upon the hearing, that the applicant has met the burden. We talked about that low prima facie burden that they had to meet at the standard of that hearing. And as such, though Pennsylvania law be constraining this council to grant the conditional use application with the following conditions in order to make sure that they do comply with the intent in form of the zoning code. One, that the applicant comply with the testimony exhibits at the hearing. However, they should be permitted to make subsequent changes, comply with the intent of the Norbert Borough's zoning ordinance if those changes are later approved by council. Two, that they comply with all laws, regulations, and codes of the United States, Pennsylvania, and Norbert Borough. Three, that the construction within the right-of-way as presented on the plans shown at the hearing, which include the landscape planters, building steps, and the walls, be permitted, upon the condition that such items can be removed by the applicant and reconstructed by the applicant at their own cost, either temporarily or permanently, upon the request of the borough, at the borough's sole discretion, and at the extent necessary, at any future time the borough needs a right-of-way access along Forest Avenue, or if there's any other entity that needs access. The applicant will agree that that permitted construction creates no vesting interest in that area, that the removal of the items within that right-of-way area may result in removing the ingress and ingress from the building to the street, and that all entryways, if there is any sort of change, must conform with the building codes, that they will be responsible for maintaining and repairing anything that's in the right-of-way, they'll assume all liability and responsibility for damages or injuries, they agree to indemnify the borough, and that they, the applicant shall not be permitted to, to restrict the public from utilizing that wall or anything that's constructed in the right-of-way, can't post any signage, that they need to adequately maintain the plantings and landscaping in that right-of-way area, that they not make any modifications to the structures within the right-of-way without council's written approval, and that they enter into a written agreement that we can file against the property and record evidencing all of these conditions so that runs with the property and is noticed for any future owners. That's condition three. Four, that they install the exterior and interior bike racks for the building as discussed at the hearing and increase that availability if the demand is necessary and needed. Five, that they install dedicated electric vehicle charging stations for at least two vehicles within the building's parking garage, shall increase the availability of dedicated electric vehicle charging stations if necessary to meet demand. Six, that the building maintain trash and recycling collection inside of the building and areas solely dedicated for that purpose, and that the trash and recycling collection be serviced by a private trash hauler. Seven, that all off-street parking spaces located within the building's garage shall be made available to the residents of the building for parking, shall not be rented to non-residents. Eight, that the setbacks from the adjacent properties whose frontage is on Essex Avenue, which is the western side of the building, shall be shown on the plans presented at the public hearing. So again, there's no change in that setback because there was an increase in what was provided. Nine, that the applicant shall consult with the Norbert Shetree Commission regarding the type of trees to be planted along Forest Avenue and Windsor Avenue. All tree guards installed on the sidewalk shall be ADA compliant, shall not result in uneven surface around the trees, including any depressions or elevations around the trees and the tree guards. And as the tree grows, the roots of the trees shall not be permitted to protrude above the surface of the tree guard sidewalk, shall not cause the sidewalk to become uneven, and addressing what we can see in Haverford Avenue, making sure that doesn't happen. The applicant shall consult and obtain any recommendations of the Borough Fire Marshal pertaining to fire protection and life safety, planning, and address any recommendations with the final plan submission. Eleven, that the applicant shall provide a narrative listing and explain the environmentally friendly building techniques, systems and materials that will be incorporated in the building with submission of the preliminary plan. Twelve, that the applicant shall wall off or screen off all utility air handlers that are on the building's roof. Thirteen, that the applicant shall comply with the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code in the building's construction, and regardless of the standards set forth under the Borough's Building Code, which was just adopted in 2015. So that's a higher increased standards. Of course, the applicant shall be permitted to exceed such standards if desired. So those are the 13 conditions that I recommend would be reasonable conditions to make sure that this would be in line with what is the intent of the code.
Any discussion?
I, I, yeah, I want to raise it. Again, I want to make a mea culpa to my constituents. An ordinance was introduced sometime, I don't remember the date, in the spring, and I was very confused by the volume of everything. I did not realize I was voting for an ordinance that would allow, you know, I, I think the developer is a nice gentleman, I'm looking at him right now. You're a nice, I have no problem with you, but I wouldn't have voted for an ordinance that changed the code to allow for the fourth story. And I think that this whole, the whole process that brought this about has been, it's been very frustrating for me. I really enjoy my colleagues and being on council, but I haven't enjoyed this part of it. And I, I think it was a mistake to allow that extra fourth floor, and for other reasons that I'm not going to get into right now. I am, I'm not supportive of, of what we're doing tonight, and I think that it's just one example, and the fact that I have to do this right now is, is an example of how applying a conditional use process to an apartment building is just strange. And, you know, that, that's my piece.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, Bob.
When we, as a council, about six, six months ago, we passed, we enacted an ordinance that lowered the heights on the whole entire 5A district. Because we heard from our constituents, we heard from our neighbors that four stories, 46 feet was too high. And so we decided as a council, we unanimously passed an ordinance to lower the buildings everywhere. And at that time, the planning commission said to us, if you want to leave Windsor Avenue taller, that's okay, under the condition that you increase the setback from Windsor Avenue to 25 feet, which is currently what it is. And if you increase the setback on the, on the north-south streets, which is, you know, Essex, Forest and North Norbert. And their recommendation was kind of like, yeah, you're probably doing the right thing by reducing the heights everywhere. And I think we, I'm proud that we made that decision, for just the reason you're saying. But we left at that same height on Windsor Avenue. And I'm very proud to, to vote in favor of this, this particular conditional use. I think we're really fortunate as a community to have a property owner who's been here for a long time investing in our community. I think we're fortunate that they brought a project to the community that, that I think to the person, all the people who own the shops are really excited about having more residents living in our downtown. There are residents who currently live here who are concerned, where will I move when I age? And now there's like this new apartment building right near the train station that we can, we can jettison our car and we can move there when we're older. And, and this is like a kind of a new possibility for a livable Norbert. So, and I think this is just the beginning of, of really a new kind of possibility of vitality, and I'm pleased to see us converting commercial parking lots to residential homes.
And I just want to, you know, I missed a few things, but I just want to add that, that I'm, I'm concerned that all over Lower Marion, there's a perception, and I know I'm getting a lot of looks right now, and that's okay. There's a perception that we're too pro-developer in government, and I'm worried that we could be becoming that here in Norbert. And I also, I, and again, this is no shot at the developer, but this is going to be extremely expensive rental housing, based on the math I did and looking at the designs that I saw. So I just, I think that this has a gentrification element to it, and I just, you know, we just disagree, and that's okay. I mean, I, I have a feeling that I'm not going to get my way on this, but I, for this and other reasons, I just, I don't think that we're sending the right message to our constituents, the way that we're handling all these zoning changes and.
Okay, yes, go ahead, Rob.
I would say that we haven't had downtown development in 40 years, and I, I view this as a very narrow window of opportunity that is going to close probably very soon, as soon as the next recession hits. So I think because of favorable interest rates and the demographic place that we're in, where baby boomers are looking to downsize, there's a special moment of opportunity right now for this town that we haven't seen in four decades, and we may not see in another four decades. So to me, this is not the beginning of a kind of uncontrolled rash of development. This is a very smart, considered project that has gone through the conditional use process, and that's why it's, it's going to get my support.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, all in favor of approving the conditional use application for 114 Forest Avenue as summarized by the solicitor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Nixon is opposed. All right, I'll take a motion for the tentative sketch plan approval.
Okay.
I think you just say that.
I move that Borough Council approve the tentative sketch plan approval 114 forest avenue.
Okay, Mr. Solicitor.
Now, and I'm happy to talk about the land development process with everybody individually offline, just to kind of explain it in more detail. But in Norbert Borough, when there's any land development or subdivision, which are defined terms under our code and under the municipality's planning code, there's a three-step process of approvals. First, the developer has to come in and obtain a tentative sketch plan approval, which is essentially a sketch plan. There's more on this plan because of the conditional use aspect, but usually it's just a couple boxes, very limited. Just to show this, this is what we want to build, this is the footprint of it. It's then reviewed for the criteria under our provision of land development ordinance, and that's what we're here on the tentative sketch plan. After that will be a preliminary plan, and there'll be a preliminary plan presented after this to councils for their consideration that has a little bit more detail pertaining to stormwater management controls, possibly landscaping, I'd have to look at the, at the SADO. And then there could be additional reviews, again, by our experts, making sure it complies with that in more level of detail. After the preliminary plan is a final plan approval, and that is what's going to be built, that is the plan that's going to be recorded. So this is an ongoing process where each time it will go before the planning commissions, each time council will have the ability to, to approve or deny those plans. Now, council can't take back something that was approved in a tentative plan, so there is a level of, of time we're being locked into. But this isn't a, you know, this is going to be built this way, we don't know what's going on. This is again, the first stage of development in the land development. This is a standard resolution that we, as the borough, have done with land developments in the past, to sort of make sure that this is constructed according to law, with the borough's interests met financially, requiring land development agreements, requiring escrows to be set up, requiring views by professionals. And there are waivers that are being requested for this plan. There are four waivers. As I mentioned at the hearing, two of those waivers actually are conflicts with our form-based code. The other waiver is a standard waiver which essentially says, don't make me put all of the roads around here adjacent to this property on the plan, because it's level of detail that the development is unnecessary. And then third is requiring that only 30% of parking spaces, the code says, under our SADO code, which is older, says that parking spaces may be nine, rephrase. Our code says that only 30% of parking spaces may be 19 by 18 feet. They would like all spaces to be nine by 18 feet, which essentially is the standard, nine by 18 feet. Municipalities that I'm working for are actually amending their parking ordinances from nine by 20s, make them nine by 18. So that is a request as well. So those are the waivers that they're making at this time. Again, it's, it's, it's a process. This isn't the first time that you're going to see this. It's really going to be up to the, the staff to do more increased reviews before it comes back to you.
Okay. Any discussion or questions?
Just a question about the submission requirement for the, the context drawing. Are they asking for a waiver of the sectional elevation that shows the adjacencies, like, the one that shows the elevation of the building and then across the street, the neighbors' buildings?
No, this, this would be essentially the overhead plan, the drawing, that, that would show all of the streets surrounding the area, and they just want to focus on what is right there.
Just in plan.
Right, so this, this doesn't.
Not in section elevations.
Correct. And in fact, we amended our SADO code to require at the preliminary plan level that they provide, that all applicants provide detailed architectural elevations and materials. Now again, they had to do that at the conditional use hearing, but had they not had that all done, they would have to have it. Now that's requested the planning commission because they want to see that earlier. But that wouldn't be something you'd see at this level, that's more the next level of detail.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor of the approval of the tentative sketch plan? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Nixon opposed. I will take a motion for 8G coming from Mr. Nixon.
Yeah, we have three, what I would call routine requests for extension. I'd ask Sean to touch on them each as concisely as possible, unless council members have questions beyond that. President Munich, I move the Borough Council approve the request for extension of review minor lot subdivision 838-840 Montgomery Avenue per an attached letter submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Request for extensions, there's not.
There's nothing to any of, yeah.
All in favor?
How long is the extension? I'm sorry.
Till the end. We'll have to take action at our February business.
Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. Go, Jim.
President Munich, I move the Borough Council approve the request for extension of review tentative sketch plan land development plan 100 Forest Avenue per the attached letter submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. President Munich, I move the Borough Council approve the requested extension of review letter of tentative sketch land development plan for 203 Havitt Avenue per the attached letter submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Solicitor, do you have a report? I'm sorry.
No report.
No report. Okay, is there any old business?
I have a comment for the council, actually.
Go for it.
I just wanted to give a shout out, as many, you know, as, as I'm sure 50 Norbert families know, but as maybe a lot of other Norbs know, we have a nonprofit daycare center that operates here in the borough amongst other locations. It's a really neat place. It's actually Norbert's largest employer of women and minorities and people of color. They provide quality daycare in a nonprofit setting and offer subsidies for families that maybe can't afford the full bill because, you know, daycare is expensive. But it's, it's in the daycare realm, and I know this because I have a little one, I'm getting a top rating, it's like a really big deal. And Montgomery Early Learning Center recently received the highest score you can get from the state of Pennsylvania. And I just know that that's something that's very attractive to families here in Norbert, and I just thought it was something that, as a good community partner and a school, a school here in the borough, that we should honor them for what is really a large accomplishment here in Norbert. We can be really proud of them. So, yeah, yeah, we'll see.
Thank you.
Comment, if committee chairs, what are your thoughts about doing a quarterly newsletter to some tidbits and bites on what committees are doing? I'm not sure if anybody even reads this newsletter.
Can you ask a gummy them off?
Yes.
I'd be happy, as soon as you.
I was just going to say. Think about it and let me know.
As soon as you want to do one, F and A will have submission.
Any old business? Hearing none. I'll take a motion.
Motion adjourned.